And I am. Over EC two lambda. So these are the components which we have covered. Now we will move ahead and we will talk about DB component. So when I say DB, this is database which I am talking about. And when I talk about database, I am precisely talking about SQL database and NoSQL database. So in general, if I have to categorize my data. So I will just go ahead and categorize my data. So data is categorized into two ways. SQL and NoSQL. So whatever traditional data which I had, traditional data in the sense. The data which is coming from banks, from sales, from all these things are SQL data. They are called sequential data because. They can be arranged in rows and columns and most of the data which we have is. In table tabular format, it has rows and column. But nowadays what we are seeing is that. The data which we are now getting is more of a NoSQL data like people are. Going ahead and writing Facebook blogs, they are writing, they are writing WhatsApp messages. And then there are trend reviews. So when once a customer, once a company is launching a product. They are looking for the Twitter tend review, trend reviews like what, how is the customer reacting? So all these things are there. So all these things come under. NoSQL data. In NoSQL, I have two varieties. It can be semi-structured or totally unstructured. Okay? So basically, I have to deal with such kind of data because if you see carefully. Companies like Google, Facebook, they are relying on this kind of data only. So it is not only consuming, it is not only storing the data but also to consume the data. And when I say consume the data in the sense. You have to bring a meaningful result out of that. So whatever you are trying to do, you have to consume that and you have to. Derive a meaningful logic out of that. So first we will discuss about SQL data and then we will discuss about NoSQL data. So when we start with SQL data. We will be majorly concentrating on the component called RDS or relational database system. Now here, if you just come here and say RDS, it will say managed relational database service. Now the question can be asked is that if you talk about database, I am running those database on my. On-prem servers, there are my on-prem servers, there are DB administrators. And these guys are doing these tasks for me. Why should I come to cloud and do the same thing on cloud? Now here it is saying it's a managed relational database service means it is being managed by the. Cloud provider. So there are many things which will be managed by my cloud provider like the software upgrade, the. Infrastructure, the storage, all these things will be managed by my. Cloud provider. Moreover, there will be automated backups, there will be time to time. Snapshots taken at any point of time if there is a failure. The recovery mechanism is also in place. So I have to go ahead and use RDS. Now if I use RDS, it is a managed service. So you can think of a scenario where you go to the market, you buy. Clothes and then you give to the tailor, you give your measurement and then you get your work done. The other is you go to the market and you buy a ready-made shirt and you just start wearing it. So obviously, when you go to the market and just buy a ready-made material, a ready-made shirt, it is much more comfortable. Probably it may also cost you less because you are the manufacturing, the manufacturer is manufacturing in bulk. So you will be having better. Benefits when you go with the ready-made solution and that is exactly what is happening here. We have RDS. And this RDS is going to give me the relational database mechanism and I can store all my SQL related data. So if I go inside this RDS. I will just go inside this RDS, let me click on this. So I can come here, it's saying that so there are two things here, multi-AZ deployment and read replica. So many a times there will be question asked to you, what is multi-AZ deployment and what is read replica? Now both of them look same, okay? But there is a difference. So let me just come here and say multi-AZ deployment. And the other one is read. Replica. Okay, so multi-AZ deployment is basically for DR disaster recovery. In case there is a failure, how can I overcome that failure? Overcome. Of failure. Okay, so multi-AZ deployment is done to recover a failure. So how is it done? So let me say your instance is running in AP South one A. Suppose it is running in AP South one A. Parallelly, a backup will be taken in AP South one B. Okay, so parallelly, point in time recovery we say, point in time means. As soon as our activity will happen, then and there the backup will be taken. So then and there the backup is taken and it is make sure that in case this availability zone fails. The load is quickly transferred to this availability zone without any delay. So at the end of the day, the customers are not facing any problem. So I have used this guy to. Do a DR recovery or disaster recovery and it will only be applicable or it will only be functional over a failure. But same to this, you have something called read replica. Now read replica is there for performance. So read replica can be thought like this. So let me say there you are traveling from a location. So this is point A to point B. A to B. Okay, now everybody is taking the same route. So this is the only route available and everybody is taking the same route. So what will happen is there will be a good amount of traffic on this route. So it will be traffic. So there will be a good amount of congestion. But let me say there is someone who finds an alternative route. So this route can be faster and it can be less time consuming. So in my read replica, I do exactly the same. So let me say I have a database, this is my database. And this database will have a capacity. Let me say it has hundred users per second means. At most hundred users can do a IO operation means input-output operations per second. But the moment the count becomes two hundred, it will start throttling or it will start giving me a delay. So in that case, what I will do, I will just create a read replica of this. So we say RR read replica. So when I create a read replica, some set of customers can come and take the traffic from here. So what will happen? Hundred customers are here, hundred are there. So it will increase my performance or it will increase my. Speed or the latency will go down. So read replica is only for performance. If this fails. This will automatically fail, okay? Because here it is just like a copy. But this copy cannot be used to restore the failure. So this is the main difference between read replica and multi-AZ deployment. When I say multi-AZ, it is more of a backup, more of a disaster recovery plan. So in case there is a failure, how can I recover from that failure? And read replica is more of a performance related stuff. Okay, please keep this thing in mind. There are many interview. Will ask. You don't know this, it will be a problem for you. Okay? So these are the two concepts which you should know before getting started. Read replica and multi-AZ deployment. Now. What I will do is I'll move back to my RDS and I'll see how to get started.
So you tell me one more time that read replica thing was just.
Okay, see, there are two things. Now if you see at a very high, high level, both of them will look same. Both will look like we are taking backup of my existing database, okay? But the backup which we take for multi-AZ deployment is mainly for disaster recovery. So there can be a scenario. Your database is running in AP South one A and I will take the backup in AP South one B. So if I do something like this. If I do something like this, what will happen is I can sustain the failure. If this instance fails or the DB which is running on AP South one A fails, I can recover it from AP South one B. But it has nothing to do with performance. It is simply taking a backup and keeping the other DB instance in a standby mode. So that in case there is a failure, I will switch it to that thing. That is point number one. But when it comes to read replica, it is more of a performance. Here also, one more DB or a database. So this is my actual database. Wait a second. Suppose this is my actual database. Replica of this will be created, but this is only for. Increasing the IO operations. So more and more people can come and read the data from the database. Okay, but in case the main one will fail, automatically this will also fail. So you cannot recover from it. Okay, so both looks same but the purpose is different. One is for disaster recovery, the other one is for. Performance, okay?
Okay, and can we like while when we create read replica and can we write on the tree replica database?
Cannot write. The read replica is only to read. That's why.
Okay, reading.
Read replica. So you can only read, you cannot write. If you start writing, then it will give an inconsistent records to you. So we don't write on the read replica. When the disaster copy also which we create or the multi-AZ copy which we create, there also we don't write anything. Because it may create problems.
Okay, multi-in, multi-AZ also same or multi-AZ?
You don't write anything. It is just a backup. So whatever is there in your primary database, you just keep a backup of that. That's.
Okay, it automatically syncs with the primary thing. Yes.
Yeah. So let me say, let me give you an example. Let me say this is my primary database. This is my backup database. Here also you are editing and here also you start editing. Then there will be a problem, right? There will be some different data here. There will be some different data here. That's not allowed. The primary, primary database what you have, there you make whatever changes you want to and that will be synced here. Okay?
Okay, in both cases, multi-AZ and read replica also.
In case there is a clustering, then there is a different scenario, then there is a multi-threading concept. But as of now, we are not dealing with that. So you will. Major deal with one instance as of now. But in case there is a clustering, cluster means a group of. So when you talk about cluster, okay, a cluster can be something like this. So there will be one master and there can be multiple worker nodes. So these worker nodes also will perform a task, but then master is the one who is always communicating. So even if you have hundred worker nodes, the communication or whatever activity has to be done will be done by my. Master node. And because it's a cluster, multi-threading concept will come and all these things will get updated at the same time. Now here, one more concept comes into picture. One is eventual consistency and then is strong consistency. Is the strong consistency. Consistency. And the other one is eventual consistency. Consist, wait a second. Can S I S T E N C Y. Now how to understand this? Now let me say there is a friend of mine who has borrowed. Five hundred rupees from me. Okay, I will go to his house. And I will say, give me five hundred. Okay, he will say you go home, by the time you reach home, I will transfer five hundred rupees to you. This is eventual consistent, consistency, okay? But then you come to his home and say, give me the money now only, then only I will go home. That is strong consistency. What do I mean by that? Strong consistency means suppose this is my master. There is some update which is happening in the master. Simultaneously, the worker node should also get updated. If master and worker both are updated, then I get a success message. So if both are updated. Both are updated. Then I get a success message. This is known as strong consistency. It may take time because there are two instances to be, to be updated. So it may take time. But unless and until both are updated, we don't give the success message. But in eventual consistency, only the master is updated and it says fine, done. And it is master job to go in the background and update the workbook. Same like how example I gave you. So I go to my friend's house and I stay there till he is giving me the money. Okay, once he gives me the money, then only I will go home. Second is. You go, you go to your friend's house, he says, okay, fine, you go, I will give you, you go, you reach your home, by that time you will get your money. So that is eventual, eventually it will happen. Means after sometime it will happen. Strong consistency mean then and there it should happen. Okay, so this you can keep in your mind. Now. Let me come here. So it says you can use. Amazon Aurora and there is multi-AZ deployment and you can use Postgres SQL and also these are some. Thing which they are trying to promote. So I'm not interested in this, just remove this. Come here and see. Now there are. Forty database instances which can be created, okay? Forty databases can be created, point number one. Point number two is it is giving you hundred TB of storage. So there are high chances that you will not run out of space. But even if you run out of, out of space, there are mechanisms, there are provisions by which your storage will automatically increase. Okay, so Amazon has that provision where it will see whether you are. You are about to reach the quota which is allocated to you and before you reach that quota. Automatically it will go ahead and scale or it will increase your storage. So you don't need a database administrator who will sit and say, okay, fine, we have eighty percent threshold, we have ninety percent threshold. Now we need to add more storage manually, nothing like that. Automatically storages will be added in case. You reach this hundred TB of storage, much before than that it will be added. So if I go to my DB instance, as of now you can see no instance found, means there is nothing like that. I'll go ahead and create one. So I'd say create a database. Now it says you can use a standard create or you can use a easy create. Now if you go with easy create, most of the default features will be picked up and easily it will get created. But then you will not be able to learn everything. So I will go with standard create. And in standard create, I will try to see how to define availability zone. How to take the security, how to take care of backup, how to take care of maintenance and all those things. Now when I start here, it gives me six different options, six different engines which I can use. Obviously, if you go with Oracle or MySQL Server or sorry, Microsoft SQL Server, these two are chargeable. Others like MySQL, MariaDB and Postgres SQL are free of cost. Amazon Aurora is also chargeable. So Amazon Aurora is an in-house product of Amazon. And they say we are five times faster and better than MySQL. Okay, I have never tried it, but then most of the times they promoted and you can see the radio button is already clicked. So if you go with easy create, mostly this type of instance will get created. So Amazon is saying use my Aurora. But Aurora is only, only applicable inside AWS. If you go outside AWS, it is not applicable, okay? So I will go with MySQL Server. When I go with MySQL Server, I will see there is a community edition of this which is free of cost. And I can start using it. Same is with MariaDB. Here also I get free software. Postgres SQL again I get free software. But when I come to Oracle, it will ask me for. Enterprise edition. So in enterprise edition, I can either buy the software or if I have my own software. Which I have bought earlier, I can use it here. So Amazon gives me a. Provision to use my existing license and that is known as BYOL, bring your own license. So that is also possible. So now, I'm not going with Oracle, same is your, with your Microsoft SQL Server, this also will say. That you can go with Express Edition, Standard Edition. So basically it is chargeable. So why to go for all these things? Let's go with MySQL which is of Community Edition and free of cost. Now here, I can go ahead and use any engine which I want. So you can see eight point two zero eight is there. Zero two nine is there, any engine which you want, you can use it. So I will go with eight point two eight, which is the latest one, I guess. And then I can go here and say, why are you creating it? So obviously, when you are creating for production environment, it will give you high availability, fast and consistent performance. So basically, not covered under created. Same when you go with dev and test, here also there is. Good feature, not like production environment, but still development means. Not under free tear, but still good features are there. Now the moment, see here, there is something called multi-AZ cluster, multi-AZ instance. Okay, all these things are there. The moment I go with free tear, this will be disabled. See, this is disabled. So when I use free tear, this is disabled. So multi-AZ deployment is not allowed if I am using free tear. Stuff. So you can either leave it as it is or you can use a production or a dev one to check, but again that will be chargeable. So I am leaving this, I don't want this multi-AZ deployment because I am not. Doing any disaster recovery plan here. Okay, you can leave it as it is. Then come all the way down here and it talks about setting. Now in the setting, it says, tell me what is your database name. So you can give a unique name, I will come here and say my database name is. Database one, two, three. Okay? Then it says to login inside your database, you will need a credential. So let me know your username and password. So by default, the username is admin. I will let it be like that only and I can go and give the password. So password should be minimum. One, two, three, four, five, six, eight characters. So I have given pass one, two, three. To confirm the password, same thing I'll give here again. Pass one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay? Once this is done, you can come here and talk about the instance configuration. So I say BB instance. So it is like EC two only, but here I am using it for database purpose. So I can say it's a DB instance, but in the background it is also a compute engine, it is also like a EC two instance. So here it is asking you what kind of RAM would you like to go with? So you know if I go with T three micro or anything like that, it is chargeable. So I'll come here and say include the previous generation class. And here I will look for T two micro. Why I am using T two micro? Because for my training purpose, I don't want to spend money and I want to be there in the criteria limits. Okay, there's a question here, would multi-AZ deployment if. Ha, so when you enable multi-AZ deployment, if your primary database fails, automatically the load will shift to secondary database. So that is automatically going to happen. You don't have to do anything. You just enable multi-AZ deployment. The shift of the workload will automatically happen. Okay? Now, I went with. T two micro because I wanted to save cost. Now if you see here, it starts with twenty GB of storage. But it says minimum is twenty GB, the maximum is sixteen thousand three hundred eighty-four. So to start with sixteen thousand three hundred eighty-four is a very big number. But here it says. You can auto-scale as per your requirement. So every time when this storage will exceed or it will be just about to finish. It will keep adding thousand GB. So if you don't want to add thousand GB, every time you can start adding hundred GB. Step by step. So every time this. Storage is about to get exhausted, much before that this data will automatically get added. Okay, so this is one good thing. So you don't need a DBA here. So database administrator is not needed. Automatically, Amazon's machine learning algorithms will take care and it will go ahead and scale your stuffs automatically. Then you come to connectivity. Now if you are using IPv4 alone, no problem, stay with IPv4. But if you are using IPv6 also, then you can use this IPv6. I am using IPv4 and stick to this. As of now, I will keep everything in default VPC. And then which subnet which you want to go, subnet is not nothing but your availability zone. So which availability zone would you like to create? So it is default subnet or default, so default. Uh, VPC is there and then it says, would you like to publicly access it? So when I say public access means anybody can come and see what is there in the database. So this is not the right way because. When I start my work, I will never want that anybody will come and see what is there in my database. I will never want that. So generally, when you are working with a website, let me say you are working with a website like amazon.com. So amazon.com will have a web, website or a webpage and then it will be linked to a. It will be linked to a DB server. So when you go to the website, you will be able to see the product. But then you will not be able to see who last bought that product, what was his billing. Address, what was his billing mode. So all these details are not shown to you. So here also, we go ahead and. Try to do the same thing. We say, no, I don't want to make my. Data public. So no, I will have a secure channel to access this data, okay? Then VPC, so you can use your default security group here, VPC security group, you can use a default security group. Or you can create a security group and use it. So I have in the morning class I did it, I just show you. That default security group which I created and I named it as RDS security group. So let me just come here to PC two. Is opening up. So if I come to my security group. I will come to. RDS. So I have RDS security group. The most important thing here is when you go inside this RDS security group, this particular port number should be open. So if you go to edit inbound. Here I can show you. So I went here and I did something like this, add rule. Come and say MySQL. So MySQL Aurora and port is three, three, zero, six and make sure that you open it to. Any IP before address and you add this. So for me it is already added, so I will not add it again. But just to show you, port number three, three, zero, six must be open. Apart from that, you can port, open port number twenty-two, port number eighteen, any other port if you want, you can open it. But this port is mandatory. You should open this particular port. Once that is done, you can come here and save rule. And here you can go and remove this default one and try to put your RDS security group. Okay, so this is added here. Which availability zone would you like to? So you can choose anyone, A, B, C, D, E, whichever you want, you can choose that. And your database will go and get created in this place. Then if you go to your additional configuration, here it will say the database is three, three, zero, six. I will say, yeah, it's okay. Then how will you authenticate your database? So I have already created a username and password. So I'll use that. In case you don't want to do that, you can create IM user and use his password and this thing. Or you can use some third party tool to authenticate the work. So I will be using this one. Password authentication using username and password. Then if you go to additional configuration here. It will talk about initial database name. So my database name is database one, two, three. I am using MySQL eight point zero and here it is talking about backup. So now automatically the backup will be taken. Now it is your call when you want to take the backup. Every day you want to take second day, third day. So I say every day, I would like to take up a backup and I will choose a window, window in the sense. When would you like to take a backup? So you can say, okay, morning, two o'clock, every day you take the backup for, let me say I have a big database, I can say. Take the backup for one hour. So every day the backup will be taken. But in case you want to increase it, then you have to go ahead and add. Like. Uh, come here and you have to increase the frequency of this. Okay, so copy tax to snapshot. So every time whatever data is there in your database, that is actually your. ABS snapshot. So the snapshot will be taken. From there, okay? Then you can enable enhanced monitoring. So many a times you would like to see what's happening. What's going on with my database is running, is it running fast, is it running slow? So all. All these things will be taken care of. Yes, the backup is incremental in nature. So. Let me say thirty. Tomorrow my data increased to thirty-five GB. So the backup will be only taken for that incremental record is that extra five GB. You will not take the backup of entire thirty GB again because already that thirty GB is backed up. Okay, there is another question, when secondary as primary does system automatically create secondary? Uh, see, when you enable multi-AZ deployment, this thing will automatically happen. So when you say multi-AZ deployment, automatically a secondary database will be created for you. And it will keep running in the background and it will keep taking the backup point in time recovery. So as soon as your primary fails due to some or the other reason, quickly then and there, the backup will become primary and then. It will start working, okay? So here you can enable monitoring, so I told you. So here you can enable monitoring. So I told you that we have a component called Cloud Watch, which will help you in monitoring. Monitoring will help you to know what is happening. So if a query is running slow, so you will come to know why is it running slow? General logs, error logs, audit logs. So all these things can be captured in case you want to. Take care of the logs. So logs are basically used for debugging purpose. Something goes wrong. So as a as a solution architect, your manager will come to you and say, you know, this data got deleted. Can you find out how it got deleted? Which query deleted it or this query is taking a lot of time. Can you figure it out? Why is it taking that much time? So these are the logs which you can go ahead and use. Like you did not use I M role if you are using I M this guy. If you use this guy, I M database authentication, then you will use this I M role. Else it is not needed. I have anyhow given this thing. And then maintenance, maintenance in the sense. Some minor upgrade has to be done, then automatically that upgrade will again happen and you can choose a window. Or you can leave it to Amazon to decide. If you put as no preference, it will see when your database is kind of free. And automatically it will update the database. Suppose I change data which is already backed up. Next day will the system recognize? Obviously it will recognize. So if there is an existing data and you have updated that or you have deleted it or whatever changes you have done. It will definitely recognize that. That is called C D C record, change, changed records. So whatever data has been changed, it will be captured, it will be taken care by my A W S. So nowadays they are using all machine learning algorithms, right? So they are smart enough, machines are smart enough to understand who is doing what. And based on that, they will take the backup and if it is a changed data, then they will take a backup. It's the same data they are not interested in. Taking that backup, okay? Then delete protection. So somebody accidentally deletes the data. You would like to make sure that the data is not deleted. So you can go ahead and make sure that the data is taken care of. The delete one is taken care of, okay? Then I will leave it as it is. I am not talking about that right now. And now if you go with production one or you go with the dev one, their charges will be there. But I am going with the. Free tier one. So there is no monthly cost, there is no monthly charges and I can go ahead and create a. Database. So now one thing which you remember or which you should know is when I created this database, I made it. Private or I made it public access as no. Now because public access is no, I will need a third party tool to connect. Because directly I cannot go into the database and do whatever I want to. Many a times, there are engines where you can directly do and go and do the query. But this query editor, this query editor is not enabled for. My free tier. Okay, so it says if you are using Aurora serverless, then only you will be able to use this query editor, okay? But don't worry, we have different query editors also available in the market. So you can go with any query editor like there is MySQL workbench. So you will use MySQL workbench. So if you are using MySQL workbench, the simple thing what you need to do is you have to just. Go there and say what kind of database would you like to connect? So something like this.
Like what about the like users for this database like?
I I created one user, right?
Uh admin user you created.
Yes, I created one user. Then on top of that, you can create more users.
Like uh from the database, database after logging into the database.
After after logging to the database, you can go ahead and create N number of users. As of now, I have created one user admin and that admin user will create as many users as much they want.
Okay, and one more thing in real time case, like how the plan will come like this I P plan is there, this uh security group is there. This is only unit assigned to this database for like deploying any database while deploying will get the plan.
While deploying the database, you just need to open the port number and the authentication part is taken care by I M.
Okay. Like now you created the database, right? Like in real time cases I am asking, if anyone asks me to create a new database.
So real time also you create the database like this only. So there are two things. One is you migrate a database. Second is you create a database from scratch. So if you are creating a database from scratch, the way how I did, you also do like that only. Okay, you go to the console, create a database and then start putting your data. Let me say the requirement is that I have to migrate a database, a database which is already there in my. Uh on-prem, I have to bring it to cloud. So that I will tell you, give me some time for that. Okay, so if you download MySQL word bench, you will get a console like this. You have to go to file. New and then you have to add this particular thing. So I cannot download MySQL workbench on my machine. But in case you want, you can download MySQL workbench. There are many other tools available, like there is a tool called T B viewer. So you can download this tool, D B viewer. So there are many tools. So the ground reality is that the tools will give you a. Platform where you can write the query and you can go ahead and do the work. Okay, but for me, what I am saying is I will put everything on on cloud environment only. I don't want to go outside. And here I can see that this query editor is not available for me. So I will try to go with a workaround. So what I will do is. I'll go back to my EC two instance and on EC two instance only I will install. A client, a client called MySQL and I will start my work. So I will show you how to do this. So go to this instance running. As of now, you will see there is no instance. So go and say launch instance. Here you can say D B server. Okay, you can go with Amazon Linux. You can go with sixty-four bit, instance type is T two micro. Key pair, whatever you have created, you can use it. So for me, I think this is wait a second. I think I have created North Virginia, huh, North Virginia keeper. And in the network, you leave everything as it is. Say I am going to use a existing security group and you created one R D S security group. So use that because there port three, three, zero, six is open and then storage is eight GB. And advanced sitting don't touch and you can come all the way and say I want to create this instance. So basically what I did, I took EC two instance or a. Uh Amazon Linux machine and I have created a EC two instance. That is all what I have done. Once I come here inside. I will get the I P address of that machine. Take this, take the I P address of that machine and try to connect. How to connect? So you can say, okay. You can come here and say EC two minus user at the rate, whatever I P address you got, appearance. Sixteen, okay, S S H, oh, go to your browse. This is my key. Open it up. Accept the connection. Here you can go and say, so it is saying run this command sudo yum update minus Y. Just run this command. So this thing, it is going to update. So let it update. Once the update is done, so fifty-one updates are available.
Same, same, same login will use in the real time also like for you EC two.
You can use this also. So I I see in real time in environment, I told you, you can use a third party tool or you can use this query editor. You can use this query editor because you will be using the latest version. So you can use this query editor, but for me as of now it is not allowing me to use the query editor. So you can see here. Here I will not be able to write queries and do. Why? Because I am not using MySQL Aurora. But in case I am using MySQL Aurora or any paid version, then I can use this.
No, EC two instance I am asking like normally in the interview.
Use. This can be used because you are securely connecting to your database. Okay, so you can use it. So this is my D B server. I have connected to my D B server.
No, not related to database. Normally EC two instance, how you are connecting to EC two instance is through putty or web. Uh we can uh in the throughput only, right? When the real time we use.
Yes, yes. So from EC two user, I become a root user and I change this name. So I will say host name D B server. And again, sudo su hyphen. So root at the rate D B server. Now here I will install a software. yum install MySQL. So MySQL is a software. I will install that software. So it will install that. It will say that it is MariaDB, but that is actually. MySQL only. The command is simple. yum install MySQL and minus Y to say that I accept all the terms and conditions. Once the software is installed, you can try to connect to that particular database. So to connect to that database, you need to come back to your R D S. And here you need to come back here and you have to see whether this machine is available or not. So this is available. Once this machine is available, I can go inside this machine and I can. See here, there is something called endpoint. Now this endpoint is something which is needed for you to connect. So you will get endpoint, port number, you have username and password. So these four things will be needed for you to connect. So I take the endpoint. Come here and say MySQL, okay, minus H, minus H is the host name or the endpoint. So just paste that. So this is the endpoint. Then minus capital P, capital P is for the port number three, three, zero, six. Okay. Is lambda over? Yes, lambda is over. Port number is this, then I will go with minus U as a user. Who is my user? So if you remember, I gave user as admin, then minus small P, small P as password. Don't give any password because I don't want to show to everyone. Enter. Now when you come here, it will ask you for password. Type your password. One, two, three, four, five, six. So my password is one, two, three, a password, P A S S, one, two, three, four, five, six. So I gave that password. Now it is saying, welcome to MariaDB and you are connected to your MySQL server. So if you come here and say, show. Databases, databases. Semicolon, it will show you your database, database one, two, three. Now you can come here and say use database one, two, three. And you can see database changed and now you are connected and you are inside your database. Can we rename the endpoint? No, the endpoint is constant. You cannot rename it. That is something which you cannot do it. Now, once you have this MySQL. Thing here, you can come here and say show tables. If I have any tables here, semicolon. It will say empty set, there is no table. So I can go ahead and create one table. So I can just go to Google and say. SQL to create a table. Whatever I find, I will take that. So this is a example to create a tables. They are creating a table with name as persons. Person ID is there, last name, first name, address, city. So this is there. I will take this and I will run it here. Simply I paste it here. So it is saying create a table with a name as persons, P is capital. Person ID will be int, last name will be varcar, first name will be varcar, address, city and that's it. So it says query, okay, zero rows affected means the table is available now. So I will say show tables. I will be able to see my table persons. Now I will say describe. Table and the table name which is persons. I will be able to see my table. So it is saying. Person is the table. Okay, this is the partition, type, key length, all those things are here. Basically it is telling me my table features. Now if I do something like this, select is the select star from persons. I want to see what is there in my table. It says empty set, it's nothing is there. So you can go ahead and put something here. So how to do it? Insert into. The name of the table is persons. Okay, insert into persons values and you will insert the values. So the first value is going to be a integer. So I will go ahead and say twenty-three comma, then I will ask for. As per the table definition, the first last name, first name, address, city. Okay, first name. So let me say with us. Comma. Then second name is Kumar. Comma, then. Address, address is let me say. Bangalore. City is let me say Karnataka. Okay, that's it. Okay, sorry, I forgot the semicolon, semicolon. So it says one row affected. So one entry has been done. Okay. So let me clear all these things. I don't think it will clean. Let me try clean command. C L E A, clean. Single. There is no clean command here, clear. Clear is also not there. Anyway, so now if I come here and say, select. S E L, select star from. Persons. I will be able to see my entry. So this is my first and similarly if you want, you can make more entries. And then. Insert more values. So you can come here and see. The first value let me say, I will say one, one. It will be difficult for me to edit from here. Karnataka. So let me say this is. Telangana, Telang, T E L, A, N, G. This is, let me say Hyderabad. Again, I forgot the semicolon. So again, this row is affected means. Again, if I come here and say select star from persons, I can see two entries are there. Similarly, you can go ahead and make more entries and you can update the entries also. You can come here and say update. Persons. Set. Uh. Last. Name equal to give a value, let me say Ramakam. Let's set last name with Ramakam where. Person. ID. Equal, how much? One, one. See here, one row matched, one change done. Let me come back. So you can see this thing got updated. So from this, it got updated to this. So basically you can. Uh somebody gave me a command here. Okay, if it works very good. Backslash. Then exclamation mark and clear. No, it's not working. Backslash not clear. Okay, so there is a question here about the layer concept. I will let me know towards the end, Vishnavi. I will take care of the layer concept. So I will teach you how to go ahead and take care of the layer concept. So whatever is left, you just ping me towards the end. I will take care of all those things, the layered approach which you are asking. Anyhow, this is what I have done here. I have two entries. Now let me say I want to delete this. I can go here and say delete from. Persons where. So these are some database, we say code operation, C U R D, create, read, update and delete. So delete from persons where uh. Person, it is case sensitive. Okay, so whenever you are typing, type accordingly, person ID equal to, let me say one, one. Again, that is a delete which has happened. So you can see the row got deleted. Now when your work is done, you can drop the table, drop table and the table name is persons. And the table is dropped. Now if you come here and say show tables, do not show you that. Because you have already deleted that table and once your work is done, you can exit and come out of this. Exit means bye and you are back to your T P server. So this is one of the ways in which you can connect. Once you have the endpoint, you can connect to any location which you want. You want to connect to a MySQL workbench, you want to connect to a third party tool. You want to connect to any, any, any software which you want to connect. So these four things will be needed. Your endpoint, port number, username and password. And once you login, you can. Port number, username and password. And once you log in, you can go ahead and create users. Admin means he has all the privileges. So from there you can start creating more users. And then these users can go ahead and do a selective work what you want. Okay. So this is drop the table will delete the table. Yes, drop the table means it will completely delete the table and the table will be completely gone. Okay. Fine. Now, this is all about RDS. RDS is very much relational database, but you use day-to-day scenario that is. Relational database. But the good thing is that. I would go ahead and deal with this in future also. Okay. So let's do this. Tomorrow we will be talking about uh NoSQL. We will be talking about Dynamo DB. I'll show you how Dynamo DB works and how is it different from my SQL database and how can I use it for my work. Okay. Anyone having any questions, please let me know. I will be taking the questions now. Okay. So if you don't have questions, you can drop.
Like yesterday you said some uh real time cases in Lambda, I can you.
Yeah, Lambda, Lambda I give you two scenarios. Okay. More you can. Get more scenarios. So if you want, I'll share those scenarios with you. But I would like you to write the code. Uh Malte, please get in touch with the coordinator. He will share you with all the. Yeah, PPTs and all. I got a Lambda function in a test backup volume. Malte, can you share it again with me? I just ignored it. I think I just not see it. You can share it with me again. I will just have a look. Let's see why you got an error.
Oh, because is this how real time like uh.
See, whatever I am showing you is a real time thing only. I am not showing you just for the sake of showing it. Whatever is being created here, it happens in the real world also.
Okay, the thing what you have done in the story also.
Only the scale will be a bigger one. So I created a free tier DB, you will uh in the production server, it will be a prod DB. So the cost will be bigger, the instance size will be bigger, but at the end of the day, the working will be same, the work will not change. Okay, fine guys. See you then tomorrow. Can we get job based on this? Yes, definitely, Revin, you can.